Today, we would like to get back on track as it were. And because we've started talking about the fall, Genesis chapter 3 being the main basis for this session. And maybe I should just go through my slides. So you'll be familiar with this slide, it's been following us throughout every now and again, it pops up and I tend to add a new element to it. So previously, we were talking about why we struggle with knowing our calling and today you can see I've changed this slightly to why we struggle with fulfilling our calling. And but there are other things listed on this slide that are essentially the same as for, you know, why we struggle with knowing our calling. And that's because the two are similar, the very things that stop us from knowing our calling very often are the very things that stop us from, you know, fulfilling our calling. And but at the very bottom, I've added a new thing which is not knowing what's holding us back. And that's because for each one of us, there's something that sometimes holds us back and stops us from reaching our potential. And we're going to begin to talk about that because the fall, Genesis chapter 3, gives us a good launch path from which to launch into this this subject. If we go back to Genesis chapter 1 and 2, you know, you see that over there, God had given Adam and Eve a mandate to rule the world for him, to govern the affairs of this world, he'd made them masters of the universe, he'd made them the managers of the universe. And everything seemed hunky dory, but then you come to chapter 3 and then something happens. Obviously, they eat the fruit, the forbidden fruit, and from that time onwards, things begin to change quite drastically. Now, from a very purely religious perspective, we have tended to focus our attention on the the sin aspect of the fall and therefore the spiritual aspect of the fall and redemption. Obviously, that's the most important thing, you know, Adam's sin led to death, spiritual death, and salvation in Christ Jesus revives us, gives us new life, also known as eternal life. So that is very important, okay, and we touched on that, we will come back to the subject of salvation again at some point, but we touched on that a few weeks ago. Now, but that's not the only thing that happened in the fall. Yes, spiritually, something bad happened, but actually far more happened. And without addressing these other aspects, these other consequences of the fall, it is hard to understand why we sometimes encounter obstacles in life when we are trying to push forward with what we know to be the will of God and we encounter obstacles and and things don't seem to work out, sometimes we don't understand why that happens and it can be frustrating at times. So I feel like Genesis chapter 3 gives us that launch path upon which to launch into this subject and to really understand what holds us back from fulfilling the will of God. So before we do that, let's quickly, you know, go in, do some chronology here. How the fall happened, so we know that God had instructed Adam and Eve that they could eat of any fruit, every fruit in the garden except for one, the fruit from the tree of knowledge of good and evil. And they were not supposed to touch it, we're not supposed to eat it, but the devil managed to deceive them and they ate it. And the Bible says that when they ate it, their eyes were opened and they saw that they were naked. And they made aprons from fig leaves and they covered themselves. Next, they heard God walking through the garden and they ran and hid themselves. God called out to Adam and Adam told God he had hid himself because he was naked. And he was naked and afraid, was afraid because he was naked. Note that Adam and Eve covered themselves before they heard God in the garden. In other words, they need to cover their nakedness, did not arise because God was in the garden, because God appeared in the garden. Even before God appeared in the garden, they had covered themselves, which means something had already started to happen. So question is, why did they need aprons, they had been naked and not been ashamed of each other, the Bible goes out of its way to point out that the man and the woman were both naked and they were not ashamed. And then it goes on to explain to us that they now needed to cover each other, clearly the Bible is telling us something, something had happened, they now felt ashamed. They felt ashamed. And the next thing is, why did nakedness cause fear, I mean, in general, up to today, you know, nakedness might cause shame, but fear, why fear? We touched on that, you know, briefly a few weeks ago when we said because the nakedness, Adam described it as naked, he was feeling naked. But it's likely that he felt far more than naked. Because after he had put the apron on, he still felt felt naked, he had to hide. There was something else clearly going on. And we said that the word that probably best describes what had happened to them was that they were feeling vulnerable. You're feeling vulnerable, suddenly they had begun to notice differences between themselves and God. And they were feeling vulnerable. So Bible says that their eyes were opened, it should be their eyes rather than their eyes, their eyes were opened. And things began to gain significance that didn't matter before, let me explain. See, the Bible talks about the tree of knowledge. And when we think of knowledge, sometimes we think it's about maybe learning completely new things or learn about new things. But knowledge, there's primary knowledge and a secondary knowledge. For example, you may walk past a tree all your life and not know it, not know what it is, what type of tree it is, its properties, etc., etc. So you know that there's a tree there, you know, you know, you know some features of the tree, but you haven't even paid particular attention to it, it doesn't hold any significance in your mind. That tree could, you know, easily be a box and it wouldn't make a difference to you. It doesn't carry significance. Now, Adam and Eve, the Bible goes out of its way to explain that they were naked and they were not ashamed, otherwise they knew that they were naked. Otherwise, why would the Bible say, and then they were not ashamed, they knew they were naked. So what was the difference here, why was it that at this point nakedness was an issue? The answer is nakedness had taken on significance. Pardon me, nakedness now mattered, it it meant something, whereas it didn't mean anything before. I mean, we've all been children before and some of us have children and we know exactly how children develop. When a child is, you know, under the age of three, maybe even four, sometimes even five, doesn't care about being naked in front of people, it will run. In fact, you try to give a child a wash and you know what, as soon as you you take off their clothes, they dash off and then you have to go and catch them. They enjoy being naked, they don't care. Do they not know they are naked, that they are not wearing clothes, of course they do. But nakedness doesn't hold any significance in their minds, it's like naked, so what? But the time comes in the development of a child when suddenly nakedness begins to means something. At that point, the child wants to cover itself, it will shut the door, so knock before you come into my room and things like that. Because they become self-aware. Adam and Eve became self-aware when they ate the fruit. But it became self-aware in the negative sense, you see, the Lord had said things about them. The Lord says things about you and me. He says you're more than a conqueror. And he wants you to believe that, he wants you to know that and believe that about yourself. But there are other things that you also have the capacity or the capability to know about yourself. Except that those things, when you discover about yourself, it might even make you hate yourself. You see, what had happened to Adam and Eve was that now they had the ability to know things outside of what God wanted them to know. And that's what God said, that the day you eat it, you know, you you shall die, but we'll come to that die bit later. But really, it was that, you know, you will you will become less than who you are. You will develop inferiority complexes, you will start to look at yourself in a way that you should never look at yourself. Let me use an example, a very real example. We are all people of color on this platform. And as long as you live in Ghana or in Africa, most of you don't know that you're black. Of course, you know you're black, but you don't know that you are black. Why, because you've never known anything else other than blackness and all the people that surround you, they are black and nobody looks at you in any other way other than just a fellow Ghanaian. But you take yourself out of that environment, go somewhere else where people have a different skin color and your blackness will take on new significance that you never knew was possible, okay, and sometimes it might be negative, sometimes it's positive, I've experienced both, okay. So that's what I'm talking about. Except that in the case of Adam and Eve, this new knowledge came on the back of breaking a commandment and therefore being aware that, oh my goodness, we're going to have to face God, look at what we've done. Okay, so you had guilt together with the nakedness, with the changes were beginning to happen that these guys had never anticipated. Remember that these were innocent beings created and placed in a garden to learn. You know, that's a bit also, we don't really talk about very much, but really, if we want to study what what God was doing when he planted a garden and put them there, it was, that was their school. He put them there to learn. He didn't plant a garden in the whole world, he just planted a garden in a small place and put them there. It was observe and learn, this is how it's supposed to be done, this is how you do it. And then he said, dominate the whole earth, so but what was it, take what you can see here and spread it out. So they were really there to learn. Now, but the learning this school, the schedule of this school was just very different, very relaxed. Time was not of an issue, was not an issue because you were living forever. You know, you were taking your time, learning, enjoying your environment every day, it's, you know, an adventure, etc., etc. Then boom, something else happens. Now you're running away, now you're feeling emotions that you've never known before, fear, what is it? Let's let's go back and ask ourselves a simple question, when the Lord first created them, would they have had fear? The Bible says perfect love casts out fear. That means God didn't create it. Otherwise, why would him, why would his perfect love cast it out? He didn't create it. Fear is a consequence of eating the fruit. And these guys were starting to experience fear. Suddenly, they were feeling ashamed. They were learning new things, like the devil said that you would, you would know all things, they were learning new things, but was it really something that they needed to know, that's the question. You know? There are people who say, I want, you know, tell me everything about me, I want to know, you know, it's obviously in my, in my in my profession, you, you know, you you examine people and you 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 write a report and you, you know, the report, you may have a lot of findings in it. And it's not all pleasant, some of it is, you know, is very unpleasant, highly unpleasant. I, for instance, wouldn't necessarily want to read it until I'm ready. But there are people who say, no, I want to know everything, and then when they read it, they are broken. They are broken, why, because they're not ready for it. It's not every information that you are ready for. But here, these two guys are eating the fruit and the information was just coming at them. Shame, fear, this, that, you are inferior, this, all of that, they had not, they were not prepared for it. This is a situation that they found themselves in, and I'm painting this picture just to show you that the experiences that you and I have today, you know, they have their origin in the garden, they started there, these are not new things. They started there and they've just rolled and gotten bigger and bigger and bigger and today, we now have emotions that I'm sure Adam and Eve didn't even know existed. You know, today we have them. Okay, so they became self-conscious, they started experiencing fear, shame and guilt. Note that God did not pronounce fear, shame or guilt on Adam and Eve, even the curses did not include fear, shame or guilt. God said in the sweat of your brow, you will eat bread, and he said that I will multiply your your pain in childbearing, that was it. But there was nothing there about pain, sorry, about fear, about shame or guilt, these were consequences. And when Adam said, I'm afraid because I am naked. What was God's reaction? Who told you you were naked, in other words, it's definitely not me. Who told you you were naked? God was surprised, well, surprise might not be a good word, but that emotion of surprise was certainly there, even if he knew what had happened. Because the Lord didn't expect, didn't want them to know that. The Lord didn't want them to know that because it's not something that they could handle well. So I've explained here that fear came with a realization that they were different from God. Apart from the fact that they had broken his commandment and that they had to face him. But unless God had acted in a threatening manner towards them before, you could be ashamed and feel guilty, but fear, why would you be afraid of somebody who has never hurt you before? You see, fear, so it's clear, which, and you read the Bible, you don't get the impression that, you know, that they had anything to be afraid of, the relationship they had with God was very different. So clearly, fear came as a result of something else, it didn't come from God. Fear came from a realization. It dawned on them that they were not of, that they suddenly, they were not of the same kind, suddenly they were different. They had been created and brought into a world where the only other person they could relate to that was like them was God. Now, suddenly, they realized that even he was different. Because they had sinned and they were no longer the same, something fundamental had changed in them. They lost their confidence. As a guilt came with the realization that they had failed God, it's the reason why they started to pass the blame. Adam said, Eve gave me the fruit and I ate it, Eve said, you know, the devil tricked me. Because that's what you do with guilt, it's like this hot metal that nobody wants to hold, you just drop it or pass it on to someone else, you know. And shame was a result of negative self-appraisal. You know, they looked at themselves and it's almost like you almost despise yourself. You don't like what you see, that's why you go into hiding. But the emotions we've described, really, they were just the tip of the iceberg. You know, it was just beginning. There was more to come. Now, I've written here that in Adam and Eve had essentially opened Pandora's Box. Today, we know all sorts of negative emotions here, I mean, I found this image, I don't think it is complete. Anger and wrath are not here because many people consider anger to be a positive emotion, so it clearly wasn't, you know, done by a Christian, but today, we have all these different emotions that tear us apart, that's that holds us back, stop us from being who we can be. We are either easily frustrated, sometimes we are guilt-ridden, so that God says, I've forgiven you, but we can't forgive ourselves. Sometimes it's the hardest thing to do to forgive yourself, everybody says, I can understand why you would, you know, that that would happen to you, but you can't forgive yourself. There is envy, you know, when 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 something happens to someone else and you you struggle with it, you know, something good has happened to someone else and you 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 struggle with it and you almost feel ashamed that you that you should struggle with something like that. We have grief, you know, when we've suffered loss, the pain of loss is jealousy, depression, doubt, despair, shame, sadness, fear. We've got all of these emotions now tearing at us because what the Pandora's Box was opened. Of course, there's rage, anger and rage, you know, that emotion that it's almost like the antidote to depression. You know, some people don't don't like to turn inwards and 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 go into self-blame and things like that, which is depression, they act out. They act it out. And and sometimes become aggressive. When actually what they are struggling with is depression. Now, let's look at something, the the Lord had said that, you know, of every tree of the garden that you may freely eat, but of the tree of the knowledge of good and evil, you shall not eat, for in the day that you eat of it, you shall surely die, Genesis chapter 2 verses 16 and 17. God said, you shall surely die that day. And yet, look, Adam and Eve did not drop dead after eating the fruit, in fact, they lived longer than we will live. Nine hundred and thirty, thirty years old Adam was when he died. But actually, death began as a slow process, it has started, spiritual death had occurred and other forms of death were taking root. Now, I want us to do a quick comparison of these two scriptures, if you have a Bible there, you can open it, but I've got it on on a slide anyway. We know the story of Jesus cursing a fig tree. These were the last days of Jesus, he was lodging in Bethany, he would lodge there for the night, then in the morning, he would walk to Jerusalem because it was just a very short distance from Jerusalem, he would walk to Jerusalem and there he would spend the day and then go back to Bethany because that's where Mary, Martha and Lazarus lived, so he was friends with them, so he could lodge there. And when he was heading for Jerusalem one morning, clearly, he had left with that breakfast, whether, whether, you know, Martha had taken advice that Jesus had given earlier about only one thing being needful and Adam made breakfast that morning, or whether it was, you know, the 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 norm there that they didn't really eat breakfast. By the way, people were quite poor in those days and going without food for 24 hours was like nothing. According to historians, it was like nothing, so anyway, Jesus was going and he was hungry. And he saw a fig tree. And he walked up to the fig tree in the hope that he would be able to eat some. But he found leaves and no fruit, and the Bible says, because it was not the time of figs. So it makes no sense whatsoever that, you know, Jesus should get upset with a tree for essentially doing what it's supposed to do. But after doing a little bit of research on that, they said there are different types of figs and some of these figs are supposed when they, when they show full, when they are in full bloom, so that all the foliage is on display, you also have fruit. When when it's not ready, it's not supposed to also have all that, you know, foliage. So in other words, this tree was sort of displaying something that it didn't have, it almost like the fruiting and the and the leafing were not synced. That's the explanation that I found, in any case, I'm not a botanist, so I don't know how accurate this is. But this might explain why Jesus cursed the tree. But a point I want to make really, it's not about, you know, the why Jesus cursed the tree, but what happened after he cursed the tree? According to Mark, something, you know, Mark records it differently and Matthew records it differently, and one of the things I like us to do because it's a Bible study, please, when you're reading the Bible, pay attention to differences in the way things are described in different parts of the Bible because you will learn something new. The world thinks it's contradiction and they say the Bible is full of contradictions, but we don't understand that it's about richness. God allowed different people to see the same thing differently so they could write about it and enrich our understanding of the scriptures. So pay attention to the differences. So Mark writes in Mark chapter 11 verses 12 to 25, now in the morning, as they passed by, they saw the fig tree dried up from the roots, so this is the morning after. Remember, they were going to Bethany then going back, so they did, this happened one day and then the following day in the morning, the 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 tree had dried up from the roots upwards. And Peter remembering said to him, Rabbi, look, the fig tree which you cursed has withered away. But this is what Matthew recorded in chapter 21 verses 18 to 22. Now, in the morning, as he returned to the city, he was hungry. So Matthew was describing the original incident where Jesus cursed the tree. And seeing a fig tree by the road, he came to it and found nothing on it but leaves and said to it, let no fruit grow on you ever again. Immediately, the fig tree withered away. Question is, which one is the truth, which is which is which, did it wither away immediately? Or did it happen gradually so that on the next day, it became apparent? Well, clearly, both are true. Why, because the tree would start withering if it was going to wither, a tree if all its leaves just withered, that doesn't mean anything, the tree fully alive. We, we, those of us living in Europe, you can see that happening all the time, trees lose all their leaves in autumn and gain them back. So losing leaves doesn't mean anything, but if a tree's roots die, that tree is dead. And and the Bible says it started dying from there. So from Peter's perspective, that the first time Jesus cursed, he couldn't see any death happening. Or from Mark's perspective, and and most people believe that, you know, Mark got his account of Jesus' life from Peter because the two are related. So from Mark's perspective, it happened, yeah, but you know, he didn't see, the next day he saw and he described what he saw. But Matthew sums up, and when you read Matthew's Gospel, you will discover he does that a lot, he summarizes. Matthew summed up everything and said, immediately, it died, and then he moved on to the next story. Because he wasn't going to unpack that story and make it longer. You know, and the point that I'm trying to make is this. God said, the day you eat this fruit, you will die, full stop. From his perspective, it's like the tree, the the roots are dead, that tree dies, going, it may be standing there looking good, but it's gone. You understand, it's the same thing here. Adam was still alive, but he was like that tree standing there, it was only a matter of time before he would topple over. But because death had already started happening, like with the tree, you guess what? Manifestations, symptoms began to appear, symptoms of the death that were already, was already at work in his members. The manifestations were shame, guilt, fear, feeling overwhelmed, which is equivalent of stress. Today, we know stress is one of the chief causes of death. Back then, it wasn't known, today we know that. So these things were already beginning to manifest in their bodies because God has said that day you would die, which goes to show you just how true the word of God is. Sometimes it can take 2,000 years to discover the truth of the word of God because sometimes we don't even have the technology to uncover the truth, so generations will say, oh, it's a lie, God said he would die, now we know, with all that we know from medicine, we know that death actually did happen, he has, he was just waiting to die. Today, today, scientists, doctors will say we are at different stages of dying, you know, it's programmed there, it's just a matter of time and then it 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 happens. Now, let's look at other consequences of the fall. There was breakdown of the natural order of things. This is so important, this is the bit I really, really would like, I really like us to remember. Because it's the reason why life on earth can sometimes be challenging. It's the reason why, reason why trying to fulfill your calling can be so challenging, you want to go, you know this is right, you know it's the will of God, you're trying and yet you're meeting obstacles, why, because there is rebellion, there's rebellion, the plants rebel. Plants. Broccoli. This vegetable, when you cut it, it starts to release a chemical. Now, I'm not talking about when you cut it from, when you've got broccoli at home, when you cut it, it starts to release chemicals. The chemicals it releases is its defense, fortunately, those chemicals are good for us, so it's, it's So it's, it's, it happens to be good for, 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 in, in the case of broccoli. But it's not like that with other plants. Every part of creation is rebelling and has become selfish. The plant is trying to protect itself by producing chemicals. As a toad, a toad that was transported to Australia many years ago. To, 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 um, to kill, I think, the locust or they, they had a, a different pest, a kind of insect. That was causing them problems and, you know, affecting their harvest and everything. So they discovered that the toad could eat it, so they went and brought the toad. And that toad, not only, eh, if actually we die instead. It started eating everything, I mean, started destroying everything around, not only eating things, but also that toad is incredibly poisonous. It produces a super poisonous, this thing, a toxin on its skin. That any other animal that tries to eat it dies. So Australians now have a big, big problem. Every creature is trying to protect itself and it will do anything to protect itself. I was watching a debate between an atheist and a Christian. And the atheist argued, if there is a God, why would he do something like this? Then he used this example, an insect lands on a child's eye. Then pierces this eye and lays eggs into the child's eye. And the child goes blind. He said, what kind of God creates? Something like that, and you want to tell me that God is good? That was his argument. Clearly, didn't, nobody had taught him Genesis chapter three. This is why it's so important. God didn't make that insect that way. Romans chapter eight tells us that he has subjected all of creation to bondage. Why? Because we, the managers of the earth, have submitted ourselves into bondage. So God could not allow the animals to be pure under us. He had to allow the animals also to defend themselves. So today, the mosquito is doing his own thing. If he has to take your blood so he can feed the children, that's what he's going to do. The alligator doesn't mind eating him, no problem. Every creature is just minding his own business. Selfishness, even plants rebel, pawns, weeds. There are plants that devour insects. Yes, yes, Namazal Forest, there are plants that devour insects. They open up like that and as soon as the insect drops in, boom, it closes. And they have, you know, digestive juices there that just dissolve there. There, and then they absorb the nutrients from that insect. Incredible, who knew that? Plants doing that. So selfishness, rebellion is what we're now seeing. When Jesus was on, um, traveling from, you know, the Carpanum area to the other side of, um, of Lake Edisoret. A storm broke out. And again, unless one studies the geography of the area, one would not understand. Because, you know, um, the Sea of Galilee is actually a lake. Except that it is surrounded by mountains and it's all that. It has its microclimate and can generate, you know, winds that therefore create waves. And so you can have very high waves on that Sea of Galilee. So Jesus was on a boat and, you know, the disciple said, oh, you, we are here, we are, we're about to die and you are sleeping, seriously? And he woke up and he rebuked. And the word was rebuke. Why did he have to, why did he rebuke it? Because it's rebellion. It's rebu- if this, if the wind, if the, if the storm was doing its thing, why would it need a rebuke? It was going against, it was, it was doing a rebellion that other plants and other, so Jesus rebuked it. Look at the inanimate world. You know, those of you that live in Danzuma, any piece of metal will rust. From what? The, the, the salt water that is blown in the air and then eh eh eh, things just rust. You know, you leave food there, it decays. Everything is rebelling, there is a breakdown of natural order. And this is the world that you and I are in. Adam and Eve, when we were created, they didn't have this world. They had a perfect world. Dom- exercising dominion over that world would have been a completely different task. Exercising dominion over this world, this broken world, this rebellious world requires something else. This is why this passive approach whereby we take Christianity as, ah, we just go, go and pray a little bit, eh, read the Bible and just go to work and just. It's like we're not getting it, we're not getting it. We are living in a rebellious world. It's a world that says, no, 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 we're going to do our own thing. Meanwhile, God has chosen you, he chose me, taking us out of the world. The world system, not physically, has put the spirit in us. It's, I want you to go into this world, this broken world and exercise dominion on my behalf. You're going to need more than praying in tongues. You're going to need more than the ability to, you know, pray all night. Because look at all the different things that are rebelling. You need skills, you need knowledge, you need wisdom to be able to exercise dominion. I didn't know this until just a few years ago. I just didn't know this, because I'd been taught, everything was by prayer, you know, if you're African, prayer is the key. If you pray, you don't get the answer, pray longer, fast, go to some mountain, do whatever. No, that's not enough, that's not enough. And unbelievers have been showing us that that's not enough. It's the reason why, you know, in this part of the world, if you just come to there and say prayer, they'll just look at you like, you know, like you're mad or something, just walk away. And you might think it was because they don't, it's because the language you are speaking doesn't make sense to them. They've been able to send people to the moon. They've been able to say, you know, send, eh, um, space, spaceships to, you know, other planets, to, to Mars and things. That you are telling them that the prayer will solve everything, doesn't make sense to them. I use the example of Cain, um, a few sessions ago, where I said. When Cain sinned, when he killed his brother, the Lord said, what have you done? Now the blood of your brother is crying out to me. Behold, a fugitive and a vagabond you will be. People are going to chase you down because of what you have done. So I used to think that, you know, that God was punishing punishment on him, that, you know. If you wanted to kill him, you'd have just struck him dead and that would be game over. No, they are going to chase you down because of what you've done. And Cain protested, he said, ah, my punishment is too much. Behold, you've driven me from your friend, eh, from your face and then the people are, then God said, anybody that kills this guy, God put a mark on him. But let me, the, the highlight of this story for me is this. The Bible says Cain left the presence of God and he went and built a city. He had just been told that he would be a fugit- fugitive and a vagabond. What, what does a fugitive do? They run. In other words, they don't stay in one place, they move one place to place. Cain thought, he said, wait a minute, fugitives, then people are going to chase me, okay, I know what I'm going to do. I'll build a city, build very high walls. Only Cain's family, only Cain's clan will be in this city. Now let somebody come here to come and kill me here. See how unbelievers think? No spiritual, no tongues, so no natural, rebellious nature, yet they can think, problem solved. And get out of a difficult situation. This is what I believe the Lord wants us to learn. It's, the Bible says that he has put us on this earth like sheep amongst wolves. But he wants us to be as wise as serpents and harmless as doves. Why wise as serpents? Smart, smart, be sharp. Think of solutions, think of, we, we need to literally awaken this brain. Because it's one of the biggest investments that God made in us, giving us a brain. We need to use it and the brain's powers are released when we study. The more we know, the more active our brains get. So this idea, their prayer is the key, that we're just going to lock ourselves, we won't read any book or. You won't watch any educational videos, no. Prayer, no. This recipe has been tried already, this formula has been tried already and it failed totally. You might be wondering, when was it tried? It was tried in the Middle Ages. It was tried in the Middle Ages. Christians used to be productive people. Christians used to be productive people. You would want to hire a Christian, you would want a Christian in your business. Christians used to be productive people. Paul taught them, he said, if you will not work, don't eat, full stop. He wrote to the Thessalonians. He said, those guys are busybodies moving from place, remove those people. Christians had virtue, work ethic. But today, people have been taught that prayer is the key, they should just pray. No character, no work ethic, no determination, no knowledge. Somehow we believe that just by spending time doing religious activity, we're going to be able to rule the world. We can dream on. The people calling the shots, they are not born again. And they've gotten to where they are by knowledge, by the acquisition of knowledge. By training themselves, giving themselves skills. And they, they're showing us that you can overcome any challenge. Creation is fallen. Sin has permeated creation. Creation is in rebellion and it's going to take more than just prayer. Pardon me, it's going to take more than just the exercise of authority like Jesus did in rebuking the storm. You, it's not every storm you'll be able to rebuke, oh. It's not every storm, it's not every storm in your life you'll be able to, to, to weather with prayer. Sometimes God will strengthen you, he will encourage you, but the storm will be there. But if you acquire skills, if you acquire knowledge, you are, you'll be, you will outgrow some of your problems. Some of the problems that are drowning you, that are causing you tears and bringing you to his throne every day in prayer. They will be a thing of the past and you'll be like, wait, what, what, what? I used to struggle with this, they were gone, you've outgrown it. When we're children, a lot of things that we used, that used to bother us. Ah, you lost your two front teeth, everybody laughing at you doing this in Ghana, children used to do that. And put it on the, on the, eh, on the mouth just to show the gap in your teeth and all of that. And you could be, you know, laugh that and you might be upset. Two, three years later, you don't even remember, it's gone, you have outgrown that problem, not even an issue. We need to develop, we need to grow. Only then will we overcome the obstacles stopping us from fulfilling our calling. Other consequences of the fall, and this is a biggie, loss of focus. You see, Adam and Eve had a clear idea of their calling before the fall. And their minds would have been on. Their minds would have been on nothing else, sorry, sorry for that, their minds would have been on nothing else but fulfilling their calling. They lived in paradise where there were no, well, I was going to say there were no problems, but that's actually not true. There were problems, but they were not seen to be problems. They were still naked, but it wasn't a problem. God had put them in the garden as gardeners, but he hadn't given them any tools. But it was not a problem. God said, exercise dominion, spread out, rule over the whole world. He hadn't written a manual for them, he hadn't given, here's the manual, here. But it wasn't a problem. You see, what you consider to be a problem is down to your appraisal. Something is a problem because you consider it to be a problem, not because it's a problem. There are things that people cry over, that other people think, ah, but that sounds like an opportunity. There's a story of, um, I may, I may not get this right, because, you know, I heard this some time back and don't remember all the details. But a story of, um, I think a group of businessmen that went to Africa, um, to invest. And they landed there and discovered that, you know, this was years ago. And, um, you know, many people, you know, were walking around barefooted, they were poor and things like that. And they thought, where, where is the business here? And left. And then, but one person who was a shoe, a shoemaker, shoe manufacturer, looked around, saw that so many people not wearing shoes here and thought. Hmm, this sounds like a good place to set up my business. And then he set up the, the shoe shop, Bata, which we, we know often we're growing up, everybody wanted to go to Bata and get, get their shoes. I don't know how, how true this story is, but the point here is that other people saw problem. Somebody saw an opportunity. There are things that you consider to be a problem, but they're only a problem because of the way you see it. They are not a problem in actuality, but because of the way you are viewing this whole situation. Often, you know what we do? You come across a situation and then the next thing you do is you measure the situation by your ability to deal with it. So if you come and the situation is like something you can do, no problem. But you come in there and then straight away, you, you look back at yourself and you say, hmm, I don't think I have the skills. Instantly, what happens? You see a problem. You feel discouraged or you get anxious to begin with. And then later on, you start, you might even start to feel discouraged, you know? But it is wrong to appraise a problem in the light of your own abilities. Or rather, in light of your current abilities. Why is that? Because you are like a river. A river has a source and then it has, you know, um, I get, I get this, um, this is a mouth or extrary or I get those terms wrong. But you know, you know where, what I mean, there's a source and then there's a path where it enters into the, into the sea. And the source is usually somewhere up, up in the mountains and then the river flows downstream. Now do you know that if you went upstream and got some of the water there? It would not be the same water that you would get if you went downstream. Because the river is constantly flowing. So the same wat- you don't get the same water, therefore, you, you can't get the same water. If you, if you try to get some from the river at different points. It's the, at any one point, the water flowing in front of you is different. That's the point I'm trying to make. And you are like a river. The Fred, the Irene, Que Ciaran, Prudence, you know, of yesterday is not. The Prudence, Araba, et cetera, of today. You know things today that you didn't know yesterday. You know things today that you didn't know a year ago. You are constantly changing. And if you have been investing in yourself, studying, et cetera, et cetera, then that change is pretty rapid. So to measure yourself by your current ability to solve a problem is wrong. Because give yourself a few days and you may have information that makes that problem look like nothing. This is why it's wrong to measure a, to judge a problem by your ability to solve it now. Tell yourself, oh, this looks like it's challenging. Well now, I suspect it won't be this challenging in a few weeks. Well now, I suspect it won't be this challenging in a few weeks to come because I'm going to work on myself. Okay, so that was a slight digression. Coming back to what I was saying about the loss of focus. Adam and Eve had a clear idea of their calling before the fall. They had a clear idea, but suddenly they were in the garden, they had sinned. And their minds were not, their minds were not even on the calling anymore. Suddenly they had to deal with nakedness, the existing fear, the shape. Things, the environment, their situations, their emotions were placing a demand upon them, upon their time, upon their mental resources. That, you know, all of which wasn't present before. Where would you find the peace of mind even to fulfill your calling? Loss of focus. This is where we are. This is where we are. I will use this example because it's probably an example that will hit home. I know it's very, very, very real to me. But when I was single, fulfill God's calling seemed like, duh, obvious. What else would you be doing? I was a student, got up, once I'd taken care of my lectures and my exams. What else was there to do but to focus my mind on whatever God wanted me to do? I used to see couples with children who, some of whom maybe before they got married, they were full of fire, they were going to rule the world. Then they got married and then they were just sitting in the, in their chairs, just, you know, they'd become ordinary. And I didn't used to understand that. I said, what's this? What's wrong with these guys? I used to preach really hard on this subject until I myself became a family man. Then I discovered, wait a minute. What's going on? What's going on? So many things have come into my life, so many things have come into your life, juggling them has become difficult. And as we're busy chasing one thing, going from one thing to another, guess what? The purpose of God just disappears. It disappears. Honestly, until November twenty seventeen, when I had that, you know, experience I've told you about, I went to, I went to Ukraine and I had that wake up call. I was stuck. I didn't really know what I was going to do. I remember I used to go to work, I said, Lord, I, I have experienced you in a great way before. And I've, there has been a time when I knew I was in the very center of your world. What's going on? What do I do? I'm stuck. I've lost. I don't know what to do. I remember that during work, you know, I'll go to work and then during the break, I'll just go and sit somewhere and just be literally crying that this has got to change. How long is, is this going to carry on for? This has got to change. And then my wife sent me a, 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 a video. You know, and I watched the video. I said, whoa, I went on YouTube straight away looking for more. And that led me to go to Ukraine and then the rest, as they say, is history. But coming from Ukraine, I knew one thing. If I did not take some radical steps, I would slip right back because I had, there was a new normal. Frustrating as it was, I was used to it. And there was a danger that I would slip back. So when I arrived from Ukraine, my plane touched around midnight. I got home to around one AM. Instead of going to sleep, maybe I got around to midnight, don't remember, but in the middle of the night, everybody was asleep. Instead of going to sleep, I said, no, 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 no. My life, my new life starts now. I started writing down new ideas about how I wanted to live my life. I didn't want to carry on living like before because I knew that recipe was a recipe for disaster. Because I had had a wake up call. The Lord said, to whom much is given, much is required. Much is required. So I knew I couldn't mess about, I couldn't mess about. I just came down. I started putting everything together. It ended up becoming a book, you know, you, you maybe read about it. I've read, read a book called Arise. Um, Break Free From The Tyranny Of Your Past, Your New Life Starts Now. And essentially, it's a book that talks about how to, how to, how to start a new life. Basically, that's how it is. How to start a new life. It takes the sto- it takes the lives of two people, one very broken life in alcoholism and drugs and that, and then take the life of another guy who is, you know, prim and proper. This is somebody well brought up, the parents planned this life, good education, good university, good job, everything. But both of them are feeling stuck. Because whilst this one has ticked many boxes in his life, he's feeling that there's more to life. And this other one, she's lost, you know, she's actually in a prison. So these two people, and I, you know, use the lives of these two people to show that there is more to life and that you can live for something bigger than yourself. So I really encourage you, it's available on Amazon or you can, I don't know if Irene has still got some copies. Um, yeah, those of you in Europe, you need a copy, I can send you one. So I wrote that book because I needed to start living differently. I wrote that book because of what I said about the consequences of the fall. Because when you start to walk, you start walking the path that God has chosen for you, everything is going to fight you. Everything is going to fight you, bully down. Not on purpose, not because anybody hates you, but the whole of creation is in rebellion. Somebody said, do this, yo, this, yo, spouse will say that, your children will want this. Your time will just disappear. You, you won't even know how your time disappeared. So I told myself, I have to become the most disciplined person that I know. I have to plan my life out. When weekend, before weekend comes, I've already decided how I'm spending that weekend. I, I did that meticulously. Now I'm a little bit more flexible because I've built a discipline in. So I can be spontaneous. Somebody says, oh, we want to drop by, do you want, yeah, fine, no problem. But in the first couple of years, no. Every minute was planned because I had to do that to teach myself discipline. A new way of life. And you, you know, the book talks about, you know, self-discipline and how to manage your time and all those things are there. Practically, because I wanted it to be very practical. So it's not a spiritual book. You know, some people might read it and think, oh, I was expecting, you know, a book on the Lord. No, 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 it's not a real. I, I intentionally wrote it that way. I intentionally, I didn't want it to be a spiritual book. There are too many spiritual books out there. And yet look at where we are. We need practical advice on how do I go from step A to step B? That's why I wrote that book. And I'm praying by God's grace, I'll be able to write similar books on other subjects. But all of this because life is kicking at you. The whole of creation is rebelling. And for you to actually achieve your purpose, you will need discipline. You will need discipline. You're not going to be, you're not going to fulfill the rule of God by osmosis. You're not going to, you're not going to stroll into the kingdom of God. You're going to have to be determined. Because the Bible said, the violent take it by force. What do you mean that, what do you think Jesus meant by that? I'm talking about physical violence, killing people to enter the kingdom. No. Determined people, tenacious people who say, nothing is going to stop, stand in my way. Whatever I need to do to get them, I'm going to do it. People who can make sacrifices. We, we teach people how to, how to fast for seven days. And that's the form of sacrifice that we teach them. And they finish their seven days, then go back to being carnal. Discipline of how you live your life every single day. Discipline. Look, I could be living a completely different life. I could be living a completely different life. And still call myself a Christian. But I've chosen to live a disciplined life. Because that's the only way I'm going to be able to achieve the goals that God has given me. So this loss of focus bit is extremely important and you're going to find that that's where you really need to concentrate. You need to come up with systems to, to, to manage your time wisely. Time, I, I discovered, is the hardest thing to manage in life. There are just too many things I want to just steal it. But you can change that. You can, if you are determined, you can change that.